Anyone's time, we're gonna get right into it here. And get this committee, the whole, started. We're gonna start off by calling the meeting to order and the emergency evacuation procedure, which we read just a half an hour ago. And since then, all the emergency people came into the room, so I'm just gonna say y'all know it. I guess I have to be official, though. If there's an emergency, we all follow Cliff out these doors. And if it doesn't work out, then we go out and Cliff is pointing to another door. If these doors are blocked, we go out the doors to the east, to the gazebo out on the park where the muster point is. We stay outside until someone tells us that it's safe to come back inside. If not, we all go home. The next thing we have is we have a request to attend the meeting electronically by Mayor Hanson, who was away at RMA. So is there a motion needed for this, Ms. Phillips, or is it just? It does need to be an emotion or a motion for it?
Yeah, so if we can make a motion to-
There it is, on the bottom.
Permit.
Would someone like to make that motion? Yeah, Counselor Stindi?
I'll read it slowly as I have to fill in the blanks, as I read. I move that council approves electronic meeting attendance by Mayor Hanson for the meeting of November eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, for the purpose of work demand. That's it.
And the work demand is the RMA for explanation.
That is a good motion. Any questions, any discussion? No, so I'll call the question. All in favor? Any opposed? Nobody opposed. That passes unanimously. So welcome Mayor Hanson to the meeting electronically. We'll now move to the agenda. Is there any changes to the agenda, Ms. Phillips?
I'd like to remove item three B because it's actually a duplicate. It's enclosed in six A is where the capital budget is, so.
Okay, so we'll strike three B from the agenda. And with the adjusted, with the amended agenda, would anyone like to move adoption of the amended agenda? Counselor Murns?
I'll make the motion to adopt the amended agenda.
Excellent. All in favor? Excellent. That has moved unanimously. I just want to point out to all of the less experienced counselors, you're allowed to make motions.
You saw what happened to jokes.
Counselor Romanicki the other day messed it up, so now he's afraid. Okay, we are gonna move on to discussion items, and we are on three A. Department orientations. Today, we are going to be hearing from Parks and Protective Services as well as Public Works. And it looks like we are gonna start with Parks and Protective Services. Mr. Lebsak.
Good evening, council, or afternoon, I guess. Yes, so we're just gonna run through a council orientation here on the Parks and Protective Services Division, obviously. Go ahead, and Mr. Chair, would you prefer questions during the presentation or just at the end?
I think if anything real pressing comes up in the midst of the presentation, if we're able to do that, that would be best, I think. Excellent.
For sure. So again, just to start off, lovely color-coded diagram here. So we've got Parks, Department in green, we have the Fire Department in red, which also includes Health and Safety, as you can see there. We have, blue is Municipal Enforcement, and the brown there is Emergency Management. We will get into a lot more detail on all of those. But that's kind of how it shakes out in terms of the org chart. Parks, as everyone knows, we split it out into basically Parks Maintenance, which includes our lakefront park, community parks and green spaces, and the turf mowing. And then, of course, we have our sports fields, the two major parks, as well as our community parks. And then we have cemeteries as well. Protective Services there, of course, includes Municipal Enforcement, RCMP, which is just a liaison to the RCMP, Fire Department, Health and Safety, and Emergency Management. The total overall operating budget for this division is about twelve point seven million dollars, as you can see there. For our employees, I'm very embarrassed to say we actually have twenty-six employees. As Kyle's our project manager for the entire department and didn't fit inside the Parks Division when they were doing up their stuff for me. We forgot about him. So Kyle Tooney is our project manager for our entire division. And he's not included in this slide. So twenty-six FTEs. We run thirty-six seasonals, and we have thirty-seven paid-on-call firefighters. Just to break it down a little bit more, in our Parks Department, obviously you can see there our full-time staff is, we have a manager, supervisor, an admin assistant, and we have five full-time operators, which we break down into those five different categories. Landscaping, we have Pogodil Park, which includes the campground, we have sports fields, we have turf for the entire community, and then we have lakefront operations. And then, as you can see there, we run with thirty seasonal operators. And again, in terms of bodies, we may have more than that, but we have funding for thirty seasonals. So sometimes you'll get seasonal operators that can only work July and August. So we hire summer, high school summer staff that can only work July and August. So they might bump our numbers up a little bit. So we don't run a hard number of thirty, but we have funding for thirty seasonal operators that we spread throughout that four-month period. We have eighty-five parks and green spaces throughout town. As you can see there on the side, on my right anyway, I think it's on your right as well, is actually our Parks Playgrounds and Sports Fields map. It is not a detailed map. It's more of a visual map, and this is what we would give out to visitors that come to the community, or maybe somebody that's new that isn't looking for real detailed information, but they're just looking for, you know, where's the nearest playground to my house or something like that. So we do have this. We also have a very detailed one that goes right along with our road mapping. But that one shows up the location of everything, very well spread out throughout the community. Obviously, that's one of the things that we work very hard at, is making sure that kids aren't walking too far to any particular park or playground, and making sure that we have trail connections throughout. We have three hundred and twenty acres of manicured green space. Almost all of our green space in town is what we would call manicured. We have very little, probably forty-five to fifty acres maybe, that isn't manicured. That would be some tree stands, a couple of wet areas where we've let the naturalization come along, but for the most part, everything is manicured, including ditches. And we have approximately eighteen thousand dollars in annual planting for our flowers and our hanging baskets, which are essentially in the downtown area and kind of the main corridors in and out of town. So that's where we do our hanging baskets. Again, just to add to that, annual plantings are very, very high maintenance in terms of, we water every single day, including weekends. We're picking and pruning, and they're just very labor-intensive to do flowers, annual plants, but they look really great, so that's why we continue to do them. Playgrounds, we have twenty-nine playgrounds throughout the community, as you saw on the other map. The big ones, of course, are Centennial Park and Pogodil Park. And overall, we have about one point six million dollars worth of playground equipment. Of our trail system, you can see there we have thirty-three point five kilometers of trails, approximately. We added a little bit more this past fall, when we did our, we upgraded a few trails and actually added a little bit more. So we're probably up to closer to forty kilometers of trails right at the moment. Approximately three point three million dollars worth of the actual trail plus furnishings. So a little bit of signage, you know, garbage cans, benches, those kinds of things. Just so that council gets a little bit of an understanding here, so the reason we have your developer builds trails in new subdivisions is it depends on what community you're in, the one we always refer to. So City of Red Deer, they take money from the developer, and then they build the trails and parks themselves. In Sylvan Lake, we do it the other way. The trails and parks are responsibility of the developer. They build them themselves, and then we do inspections on them to make sure that they were done to standard and everything meets the specifications. And then, once they're done, we have a two-year warranty period on them, and after that two-year warranty period, then the town takes them over as our inventory. So then they're our responsibility after that. But so that's kind of why I made that differentiation there. So the developer builds trails in the new subdivisions, and the town actually maintains, and we have, we do build or add new trails to areas that aren't done or little connectors and things, but the majority of trails in town are built by developers. Yeah, the town builds trails on existing lands. And of course, one thing you'll see that comes up here in our capital, or our budget presentation, is that wayfinding signage on trails is needed, and we've got a plan that's put in place there as part of our Recreation Parks and Open Space Master Plan for kind of a five-year plan for that, so.
Cool. Mayor Hanson, you have a question?
I do. I'm curious. One of the things I heard during the election period is around a new neighborhood in town that doesn't have a playground. What kind of parameters are put in place to ensure that those parks or trails are built within a reasonable timeframe from the time that housing starts in various neighborhoods? And are we giving up that control by doing it this way?
Through the chair, I would say, to answer your last question first, no, I don't believe we're giving up control of it because it only comes along as a subdivision develops and that land gets a development permit on it and begins development of it. Back to the first part of the question is, are they delayed and does it take a while? Yes, it does. And it's part of that same process is that a quarter section can come in, it can get, and I hope I'm using the right terminology here from planning, it comes in and it gets an overall plan for that area. And it shows a couple of playgrounds or some green space and trails in it. But those trails or green space doesn't get developed until that phase of development comes in. And most quarter sections take, I mean, in recent memory, they're probably taking five or six different phases in order to get developed, which can be spread out anywhere from six years to ten years. So that would be the answer to, yes, it does get delayed a little bit. But I don't believe it's because the developer's doing it versus the town doing it, as those areas would not be turned over to the town anyway upon initial startup of Phase One. It would have to wait till that phase was beginning development anyway before that portion of land would be turned over to the town as part of the development process. I hope that answers your question. Thank you.
Excellent, thanks.
All right. Sports fields. So again, we do all sports field maintenance, upgrades, that kind of thing. We have seven ball diamonds, fourteen soccer pitches, one tennis court, and one outdoor rink. As we know, the tennis court and the outdoor rink could use some work. They're down at Four Seasons Park. And the other ball diamonds and soccer pitches are somewhere between Four Seasons Park and Pogodil Park, and they're spread out throughout the community. So we have a number of individual ones, as well as we have a number of grouped soccer pitches up along the pipeline right away there in Lake Mead Landing, so. Moving on to Pogodil Park, again, our newest facility, outdoor facility, not completed yet. You guys took a tour while I was away on a conference, so sorry I missed that one. But as you can see there, what we've got completed already, you've looked at, you've seen, it's all up and operating. We even threw some campground stats in there, six hundred and forty-five campground bookings in twenty twenty-five. And then the future facilities there, again, will be touched on in the ten-year capital plan when we review it. So future facilities is this synthetic turf field, additional parking lots for the users up there, grass soccer fields, an outdoor rink and leisure ice, an amenities building, which would be the main building for the area, right in the middle of the park, trail development, pickleball courts, tennis courts, and an operations yard that would allow park staff, any park staff over on the west side of town to work out of that operations yard as opposed to the east operations yard in the in the commercial area, or in the yard with Public Works. Of course, we have our lakefront usage strategy, which was completed in twenty twenty there. And again, it is, just for clarity's sake, and we can delve into this much more, I'm sure, in the future. But as you can see, inside the blue area that I tried to highlight there in blue is actually what is now part of the town of Sylvan Lake's responsibility through a lease with the province. So brief history on that was, the provincial park used to be here. It took up all that space, including the land along between the road and the lake. In about twenty seventeen, the town, or the province decommissioned the park, turned the land portion over to the town, along with some grant funding, but did not do anything with the, what they call the high-water mark in the water area. We identified that right away as a concern of ours because lots of conflicting uses, the swim line was not being maintained, or the swim zone was not being maintained anymore by the province. A handful of things which, as we saw, would cause a whole bunch of conflict between swimmers, boaters, kayakers, all that kind of thing. So we started this process right away. It took us about six years. We were the first lease with the province from a municipality to take a waterfront. We won't get into how many hurdles and hoops we had to go through to get that done, but we finally got it done just this past July. And so now that area that you see there is one hundred percent within the responsibility of the town of Sylvan Lake as a lease agreement with the province. Implementation plan, so this is for the lakefront that I'm talking about, the lakefront usage strategy, completed to date, and most of this was just done this year after we received the lease from the province. Previously, if we wanted to do any work there, we got what was called a temporary field authorization from the local regional rep out of Red Deer, but it was just on a project-specific basis for one year at a time. So now that we've got the lease, we have it for fifty years, and we're able to move forward with a bunch of new initiatives that we have there. So we have boat mooring over at the Lighthouse Park, day boat mooring. We have accessible matting on the sand to reach out into the water. Expanded the electrical on the pier, just finished that in time to get the lights up. We're currently installing our access ramp to the sand. They literally just started today, but are making good progress. I saw them out there. There's lots of dirt sitting around, so. That's making good progress. And we replaced the dangerous ladders on the pier with code-compliant ladders. So for anybody that was out on the end of the, north end of the pier and trying to get up out of the water, there was broken rungs with bad welding and sharp edges and all sorts of stuff there. And again, not to get into it at this point in time, but the province basically said, don't care, not our responsibility. It's vacant public land. So they wouldn't do anything. It's just basically as if it was out in the west country in the middle of the bush somewhere. So we went ahead and did that, replaced those ladders there.
Counselor Stindi?
Just a quick question. On the lease, is it fifteen years or fifty? One-five or five-zero?
Five-zero, fifteen.
Okay.
And then what's still to come on the implementation plan, which we'll be getting at next year, will be the swim zone in front of Chateau Suites. So that red line that we have there is approximate. We'll be able to move that a little bit based on the year, certainly right now with the way the water level is. We'll be working with the boat rental company there to make sure that they can still operate, but that we still have a swim zone there. We'll be doing the boat pickup and drop-off zone with the accessible dock along the pier, which again, it looks like a straight shot off the end of the pier there, that blue area. We'll be bringing back another design for council, just to maybe add a little bit more day mooring for boats there, to drive a little bit more traffic into town just through being able to park at the dock. And then our lakefront safety items, which is the ballards that we've seen out there, the cement pebbles, we call them, the planters and benches along the lakefront. So that's all partly done, partly to be implemented as part of the lakefront usage strategy. I'll maybe take a breath there and say that was the Parks presentation. Does anybody have anything else before we move on?
Thoughts or questions? Yes?
Just that map and survey you had, that you had the blue hashed out area, is it possible to get a detailed, high-res copy of that, just for my own curiosity?
Absolutely. We can either, I mean, we can provide an eleven by seventeen of that, that's a little bit larger. We can also email it to everybody, so we can do that probably by the end of the day.
Counselor Murns?
Mr. Phillips, the orange, I want to call it a snow fence at the north part of the pier, is that the ladder replacement? Is that what's happening? What is the purpose of that?
No, through the chair. So the reason for that is because we did have, so if I can back up just a little bit to give you the history there, so when we took that over from the province, that was just dirt right up to the end of the pier, and the dirt kept washing away because of the way the water, when the lake was high enough and the waves came over the top, it washed away the bottom, and then it was making holes there, which was dangerous. We replaced that with, I think we replaced it just with wood to begin with. And then we went through and thought a better product would be to replace it with the hardy board fencing, the composite decking. We did that, and then the last two years, we've seen that we've been getting some heaving from underneath. And we can get into a little bit more of that later, but there's some heaving from underneath, and it's pushing up and breaking on the boards. So we've just got that fenced off for now until we get that replaced. We're trying to figure out what the perfect, well, not perfect, what the best solution would be for that area, whether it's to go back to some heavy timber boards that aren't gonna push up, or whether we go to aluminum, almost like a dock system. But then we would have to excavate underneath of it, create a base, and then put aluminum planking on there so that it's more like a dock. It's not slippery, that kind of thing. So it's essentially just because that composite wood decking that we have there has some broken areas in it, and we're just keeping people off of it right now, just from a safety perspective.
So what is the timeline you're thinking that you're gonna have that work done? Just, I walk down at the lake often, and I have witnessed a lot of people stepping over. We know that there was a hole in that decking this summer and that somebody fell in it. So it's a bit of a, like, I think it's a safety concern. I didn't see any signage, so I don't, you know, I'm wondering if people understand the purpose of the fence. So I was just wondering how long that fence is gonna stay there, and maybe should we look at some signage if it's gonna be a little while yet? Just for safety purposes.
Yeah, through the chair. So our plan right now is, we know we're not going to get it replaced in the near future. We're thinking springtime is when we're gonna get it replaced. So once the heaving has finished here for right now, then we're gonna replace those boards that are there and have it opened up back again for the wintertime. So we know we can't keep it closed off for the whole season. So I would suggest we're probably looking at another two to three weeks. Our staff does go down there and check that fence, I'm gonna say probably at least three times a week on a regular basis, try and keep the fence up and in a good position, but certainly some signage we could put on it would be a good idea as well. And then again, within a few weeks here, we'll have it up, replace, the broken boards replaced, and open for the summer, or for the wintertime. So and then a total replacement for the summer.
Continue.
All right, thank you. Moving along to Protective Services. So again, we'll jump into a little bit more here, but the other portion of the division is sixteen full-time employees, ten in Municipal Enforcement, four seasonal bylaw officers. We have two RCMP full-time staff, four Fire Department, which includes Health and Safety there, thirty-seven paid-on-call firefighters, and as you can see, zero full-time staff in Emergency Management. So Municipal Enforcement, I believe everybody has this, so I won't go over the strategic priorities, but we do have our five strategic priorities there. And our breakdown of full-time staff is, we have five peace, full-time five peace officers plus a newly-appointed student resource officer, who is also a community peace officer, so we have six community peace officers there, two admin assistants, two full-time bylaw officers, and then we have our four seasonal bylaw officers as well. This is essentially what we do here, is bylaws and traffic, so lots of parking regulations. As you know, we also have the paid parking program in the downtown in the summer. Noise control, property standards, which is mostly visual property standards, public conduct, traffic control and speed enforcement is a major part of our peace officers, not bylaw officers, and enforcement and penalties there, as you can see in terms of compliance and tickets. In just a quick stat there, in twenty twenty-five, to date, we've had, or to date about, two weeks ago, we've had fourteen hundred and nineteen requests for assistance, which means calls to the office for assistance on items. And one thousand two hundred and sixty-seven of those calls required municipal enforcement response. So again, you're gonna get a call to the office that says, hey, this, I don't know, this vehicle's been parked in front of my house for two weeks and it hasn't moved. You know, we need to, we need to go take a look at that, determine who owns the vehicle, make the phone call, that kind of thing. That's a response in the municipal enforcement world. We're not a nine-one-one emergency response-type department. We'll get lots of them that says, oh, hey, I saw a, I don't know, a large bear walking through town yesterday. You know, you need to go look into that. Well, that's not a response. So that's kind of the difference between what a response is and what isn't. Again, we do not do emergency response. That's either the RCMP or a different department altogether.
Guns, or sorry, Mayor Hanson, you have a question?
The strategic priorities that are aligned there, when are those decided on and how regularly are those refreshed?
So through the chair, those prior, these current priorities were done, I want to say, three years ago at the start of the previous council term. We previously brought them back every year with council, along with the RCMP. And I believe the last two council terms, we've brought them back at the beginning of each council term in the springtime. So the RCMP does their priority setting right after, so they're in April to March fiscal year, and they do theirs early in their fiscal year in April, which is typically when we bring ours back. And ours would be per council term.
Do you guys struggle to staff the seasonal bylaw officers, or is that something you have on a rotating basis? Like, how does that work, just generally speaking?
So through the chair, no, actually, seasonal bylaw officers are not that hard to staff as long as we get out front early and we get our ads out into Red Deer College and Lethbridge College, into the two programs there, the enforcement programs that are there. And we will typically get enough resumes and interest from those particular people that are looking for future careers in enforcement. So I would say the last, oh, at least five years, we haven't had an issue with staffing seasonal bylaw positions, no. And then the other thing that we do here, which some communities do, some communities don't, is we do animal control. So all our officers, our community peace officers, as well as our bylaw officers, are all trained in animal control. And we do our own animal control in this community. We have a partnership, well, a partnership, I guess you'd call it, a payment partnership with SPCA in Red Deer, Humane Society in Red Deer, and they're our long-term holder of animals. So we have short-term in our yard at the detachment, as well as short-term down at the Public Works Yard. If it happens to be an overnight stay, but anything beyond that, we take into Red Deer, to the Humane Society. And we have an agreement with them that then they take the animals and take care of them from there, so. And then visitor-paid parking. I don't know how much I need to get into this, other than we'll debate it lots come the upcoming council or budget deliberations. But as you know, they're just, it's a seasonal program, runs May fifteenth to September fifteenth, seven days a week. Our rates are there, and currently, we cover almost the entire downtown, which is north of the tracks. There's a small portion on, right in the downtown, along Fifty that we do not cover, and then the far east and the far west ends, we do not cover, but for the most part, it's everything from about fifty- Fifty-third Street all the way down to Thirty-third. Okay. Uh, and then, uh, our newest position, so, we had a, a position that was called a community awareness, uh, safety and awareness officer, uh, it was just, we just started that last year, uh, working at a program on it, and we have since transitioned that, uh, officer into a school resource officer, so it'll be a, a full-time school resource officer now that works with all the schools in town, uh, we're just in the process of getting our program approved through the Peace Officer Program, I'm going to call it the Solicitor General's Office, because it used to be called the Solicitor General's Office, and it makes much more sense to everybody, um, so the Solicitor General's Office has to approve the person, they have to approve the program, and they have to receive, uh, approval from the school divisions to have this person working. So, we've submitted our documentation now, we're in the process of waiting for the, uh, Peace Officer Program to make those, uh, official appointments onto our, um, onto our peace officer, so that he has a few additional resources in his hands, uh, in, in addition to, like, he can enforce things under this, uh, Education Act, which is to allow him to do things right within the school, um, and then as well as they've approved our program so that it matches up with the RCMP program, so, all of that is in the works right now, and again, it, we just wait, um, for the Peace Officer Program to give us the thumbs up on that one, so.
Counselor Stindi?
The, the question is regarding the powers that we can have according to the School Act, would that be like the trespass aspects of it, uh, when we, in the business, used to call the cease and desist letters to, to, uh, adults sometimes?
Uh, through the chair, yeah, that's correct, there's about six sections of the Education Act that are, uh, provided for appointments under a school resource officer, I don't know them all off the top of my head, but yes, it, it essentially allows them to, uh, enforce certain items, um, within schools, because currently, without the Education Act, you can't do it within the school, it has to be outside of the school, so, yeah, it, that, um, you know, some of the smoking vaping things, those kinds of items within the school would follow the Education Act, yeah. Okay. Uh, again, I talked about, uh, two members up at the RCMP, so we do have two town staff up there, uh, full-time staff up there, they call them stenos, uh, admin assistants, front counter people that work up there, and, uh, the current RCMP system up there is, they have five civil servants up there now, working the same jobs as our two, and they rotate through, so previously, they used to be, here's your job, you do this job, and that's all you do, and now they have all seven of those rotating through, so I can't even, other than saying, they work at the front counter and they assist the RCMP, uh, they do a little bit of everything, so they do files before they go to court, they do fingerprint files, they do, there's a little bit of everything that goes on up there, so that's, that's their role up there. And then I just added there, so there's sixteen RCMP municipal members and seven rural members, so there's twenty-three members that work out of that office, uh, and sixteen of them are on the ars, are municipal members on our payroll, and seven of them are on the province's payroll. Uh, our contract right now in 2025 is approximately three point three million dollars for those sixteen members, plus the two full-time staff. All right, moving on to the fire department, uh, so we have the, our full, four full-time staff there, we got a chief, deputy chief, assistant deputy chief, and then of course, we have one full-time position, that's the healthy, health and safety coordinator slash admin person, so, uh, Jenny Magnuson is the health and safety coordinator for the town, and also does the dual role up there as admin for the fire department. Uh, and then we have thirty-seven paid-on-call firefighters, uh, as you can see there, they used to be called volunteers, um, reflect more what they do now as they're paid-on-call, so we run, uh, mandatory availability shifts, I'll call them, in the summertime, and then in the wintertime, you're on a shift, but it's basically, if you're available to show up, you can respond to the hall. Um, for the summertime, we make sure that we have, um, designated shifts and designated people to show up, um, just because of holidays and busy schedules and things, so, uh, again, we have thirty-seven of them there, and the next slide will tell you why we need so many, so as you can see there, uh, in 2025, so far, year-to-date, we've had fi- and again, this was about two weeks ago, we've had five hundred and eighty-three calls in, in, you know, whatever, however many number of days that is, two hundred and eighty or something like that, uh, five hundred and eighty-three calls, uh, last year was five hundred and eighty-eight, the year before was five hundred and fifty-one, and if we kept going down, you can see that trend pretty much follows that, as the town grows, that call volume continues to grow along with it. Another thing we do is fire inspections on all commercial buildings, uh, in 2025, we did two hundred and twenty-three inspections, uh, again, I'm running out of space here on my computer, I can't, hopefully I don't get rid of the mayor when I do this, nope. Um, so, incident hours is six thousand nine hundred and eighty-three, that's how many hours, uh, our firefighters spend on an incident, and it could be any range of incidents, but that's, that's how much they spend, you can see the training hours there, uh, they train every Wednesday night, anywhere from two to three and a half hours, depending on what it is they're doing. And, uh, so standby hours, again, that, that relates to the, uh, certainly the seasonal, uh, shift rotation, where we need to make sure that we do have available staff, so we actually have standby shifts in the summertime, uh, as opposed to just hoping that we have enough bodies show up into the fire hall if there's a call. Um, so again, you add all those things up, you're looking at like forty-six thousand plus total hours, um, that those forty-one members put into the fire department every year.
Hang on, Mr. Lipsap?
Yep.
Counselor Stindi?
Just a question regarding the, um, growth in activity for the fire department, uh, you made reference to, you know, as we grow, the calls are growing, is it lockstep, like, you know, ten percent more growth over a certain number of years, now we have ten percent more calls? And, and the other question I have about, um, the number of calls we're getting, in the last couple of years, uh, there's a lot of need for fire departments, not just here, but in other communities too, to cover for ambulance calls in effect, um, so, are we seeing that, is it, is it lessening? Uh, so, two questions, really.
Uh, so through the chair, the first question, is it kind of following the same numbers? No, I would say it's increasing exponentially more, the calls are increasing more than the growth is, um, certainly, we're just getting busier and busier all the time, um, and it doesn't, it's growing fa- the calls are growing faster than the community, um, and again, partly, to your second question, then, it would be that, yes, we see lots of medical assist calls, and it comes for a number of reasons, um, and the chief can correct me if I'm wrong here, I don't quite say the right thing, but if a ambulance is not within fifteen minutes of the incident when a call comes out, then the fire department gets called out first. So a lot of our rural calls, even if there's an ambulance in town, in the bay, the fire department also gets called out to begin with, um, because they need backup for that ambulance. Uh, another reason for medical assist calls that we go to is if there's, uh, an example would be, there's an elderly person, uh, in a basement suite or something like that, and they need some assistance getting out of the house, uh, you can't get a, a lot of times, you can't get a, uh, stretcher down the stairs into a suite and then back out, so you'll need four firefighters there to actually physically grab a chair, pick that person up, bring them out of the house so that the ambulance can then put them onto the gurney, um, stretcher, and take them off to the ambulance, so there's, there's a lot of assistance required for paramedics, because, again, hopefully I'm saying this right, uh, chief, but, I mean, there's, there's two paramedics rolling in an ambulance, and they're not always strong enough, large enough, to carry people out and do things, so that's another reason why we get a lot of medical assist calls, yeah.
A follow-up, a follow-up question, um, as we see this, um, growth occurring in support, uh, is there any projection, if this keeps growing, any projection, like, is it five years from now, is it ten years from now, or is it next year, where we have to say, oh, we need, like, in the summertime, we need a core crew to be hired full-time? Is, has that been kind of projected and saying, oh, if this keeps going, we're three years away?
Uh, so again, through the chair, it's been discussed lots, um, it's something that we've actually put into the budget, we kind of put it in the last year of the operating budget every, for the last couple of years, just so that we have an understanding of what that cost might be, uh, which is quite large, but no, the way we're, the way we're currently running it is, we don't have an actual year projection, because it's more based on, are we going to get our paid-on-call firefighters to respond to the hall? So right now, we're lucky, and I don't, this isn't real wood, but knock on wood, um, we continue with that, because right now, we can get six to eight, ten people during the day responding to a call. We need, is it four members to leave a truck?
For truck?
Four. Four firefighters need to be present to, for a truck to leave the hall, as soon as we don't have four firefighters leaving the hall, then that's what's going to start to trigger, we're needing full-time firefighters. Um, and again, we don't want to, uh, try and project that that's going to be two years from now, or five years from now, or ten years from now, it's literally going to be when we start seeing that we don't have enough firefighters respond to the hall, um, then that's when it's going to become time, and we'll continue to put kind of that dollar figure into the last year of our, of our three-year, uh, operating budget, each year, and push it out again every year, just so that we're not losing track of that, and we're aware that if this time comes, you know, it's a large hit to the budget, so, that's kind of how we're, we're, we're projecting it at this point in time.
Uh, thank you, sir, I, I don't want you to have to speculate here, because that's not terribly useful, but, um, are you, or anyone from your department, seeing any indicators as to, aside from just the population getting larger, anything that's triggering these larger number of responses, like something that we could address as a strategic response?
Um, through the chair, no, I don't think there's any one thing, uh, we will be bringing conversation back, I want to say in January, I think it is, regarding, uh, false alarms, and whether we add that into our bylaw, and that maybe cuts down on a, a couple of calls a year, but I think it's, again, it's just simply, I think there's two things, one is people are, it's busier, uh, overall in town, and busier in the summertime on the lakefront, and the second thing I think we could say, um, is a contributing factor of this, is people are more willing now to pick up the phone and phone nine-one-one than maybe they used to be even, I hate to use the C-word, but before COVID, you know, it was a little bit more, wow, I'll go to the a- emergency, or I'll go sit at the drop-in, you know, the walk-in clinic or something like that, now people are just, nope, I'm just going to call for help, somebody will come, so I think that, you know, without having stats to, to determine that, that, um, is something that we would, would kind of point our finger at too, is that it's just much more willingness to, to call for help and have people come. Okay? Um, oh yeah, I was just going to touch on, so the service area as well, uh, as you can see, and I don't, do we have? What happened here? What did I do? Now that I moved things around, there we go, no, I don't have the map, so, as you can see there, um, Sylvan Lake, so we do, no, we're getting the, an echo, uh, the response area includes town of Sylvan Lake, but it also includes portions of Red Deer County and La Combe County, as well as summer villages of Nordland, Wolf Jarvis Bay, Half Moon Bay, and Birch Cliffs, so we have, uh, con- service contracts with those other municipalities, and the other thing I will do is I'll circulate our map, uh, of our service area, of what we do in Red Deer County and La Combe County. La Combe County is fairly small to the north of us, uh, Red Deer County is very sizable, um, that we cover, and, uh, we, of course, we get a, a piece of equipment from Red Deer County, we get some funding from Red Deer County, but at the same time, we have to respond, when some, when a call comes in, um, that's our response area, so I, I will also share that as well. Uh, then the other one that I have here is, uh, technology and continuous improvement, so again, we use something called the First Due, uh, Records Management System, and it's just, I just wanted to touch on that quickly, uh, because it's something that we moved over about six years ago, and a handful of other communities in the province moved over about six years ago, uh, our deputy chief, Steve, is an IT whiz on it, and is on kind of their development team for Alberta, and now I think... How many communities did you have in the hall? Forty-eight or something like that? We had, yeah, there's, so we had a training session, we hosted a training session here, uh, this past, uh, spring, and we had, there's about forty communities that now utilize the same system, uh, a lot of the stuff that Stephen and his six other, five other compadres have, uh, developed through this, along with their IT staff, and there's probably about another, I think they had about sixty-five at the hall, um, communities that were interested in it, so, just wanted to touch on that, that we did move over to that, uh, a few years ago, and, uh, it's been very well-received, and it's, it's an overall package, instead of having two or three software systems, one to do dispatch, one to, um, do your record-keeping, one to do mapping and some other stuff on the incident, it's all in one, it's, it's really streamlined everything for us, so. Oh, see, look at this, what am I doing? There, health and safety, uh, so again, we have health, health and safety program, uh, quite proud of it, we do very well with it, um, I won't go through all the regular, uh, or the items there, uh, we are Curtis Core certified through this program, and again, knock on wood, don't want to jinx us, uh, but our WCB, uh, rating is through the roof in the good side, um, through our health and safety program, so. Uh, oh, and then moving on to emergency management, um, so again, I'm much, don't remember where I found this little cartoon, but I love it the best, because it really does sum it up, you know, now it's, let's wait to see what the government's going to do for us, so, um, the only thing I wanted to touch on here, because there's a whole bunch more training that has to go into emergency management, is just kind of the, uh, definitions here, so an emergency is a response using existing resources and procedures, so, our crews go to a number of what we'll call large events, they spend hours and hours there, as you saw on the stats, but they're just an emergency, it hasn't expanded beyond their own capabilities, and once it expands beyond their own capabilities, and you're calling for outside resources, either to help or to, uh, it's going to be such a long event that, um, you need to, you know, get different shifts in and you need help from other people, that's when it becomes a disaster, so that's kind of the definitions of how, uh, the province has identified that, and when you go through your training here in the future, that's what it will be based on, is emergencies are emergencies, and they're daily events that you handle within your community, and a disaster is something that you need outside help with. Uh, lots of legislation around a bird emerg- er, around emergency management, uh, so you've got the Emergency Management Act, local authorities' emergency management regulation, we won't get into all those things, but then we also, as part of tho- that legislation, we have to have our own within the town, so, the local authorities there, we're required to have our own bylaw, we have to have a director of emergency management appointed by council, uh, we have to have an emergency management advisory committee appointed by council, uh, we have this emergency management agency that they call it, that's our internal working group, uh, of staff that we can call upon in, in terms of an emergency, we need to, of course, have a plan, and then under that, I put here, just for, uh, everybody's knowledge, we have, I don't know, can you guys see that, or are you looking at the exact same thing I am? There, okay, um, oops, so, under our plan, so we're part of the Red Deer Regional Emergency Management Partnership, which is everybody within Red Deer County, we're also, uh, members of the Central Region All-Hazard Incident Management Team, which spans basically from, uh, Podoka down almost to Airtree, oh, down the carstairs and border to border, we're part of that group as well, and, uh, and then I also happen to be part of the, uh, All-Hazards Incident Management Team that, um, hopefully never has to, but can respond anywhere in the province, so they have five teams across the province, and they, um, if one area... So they have five teams across the province and they, if one area of the province is going through a long term event and they need to be spelled out because they can't spend that much time there, then they'll bring in these other teams to to go there. So, oh, and then, of course, we have our own hazard identification risk assessment for Sylvan Lake. The other thing you might need to know, state a local emergency, that can only be declared by the mayor or two members of council together. Staff cannot do that, director of emergency management cannot do that, has to be the mayor or two members of council. And that is it.
That is a lot, Mr. Lubzak.
Yes, it was. I hope I didn't speak too fast because I was, I know I was going there at the end.
Are there any questions for clarity, anything that anyone would like to discuss? We are about 50 minutes in, so I'm thinking we're going to take about a 10 minute recess and move on to public works when we're back. Nine minute recess.
Megan, we're going to see if we can figure out the screen for you as well.
Mr. Watson.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So my name is Amjad Khan. I am Director of Public Works. And Public Works has three major departments. Environmental Services Department, Operations Department, and Engineering Department. So I will introduce first John Watson. He is the Operation Manager. And 23 staff report to him, including him. Environmental Services Department, we have nine staff, including Monique Johnson. And Engineering Department has five staff, including Eric. So each manager will present their department. So starting from John, thank you.
Thanks, Amjad. Good evening, Council. The Public Works Division is responsible for delivering a broad range of essential services 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Our dedicated team helps ensure public safety, enhances the quality of life in the community, and ensures critical infrastructure is maintained and operational. We utilize a variety of shifts that ensure staff are available when needed and provide around-the-clock coverage for after-hour emergencies such as snow and ice control, traffic failures, or water main breaks, or the like. These shifts maximize efficiencies. And when used with our partners in the private sector, we can ensure that municipal resources grow efficiently and effectively, and not necessarily in relation to the growth of the town, and that the expertise is available when and where needed. Further to the delivery of core services and under Council's direction, Public Works manages several environmental initiatives that we'll hear about a little later. And as you would expect, we collaborate closely with the other departments to share our expertise when needed. Public Works is comprised of a Director, who oversees three managers, as Amjad mentioned, each responsible for managing specialized and specific functions within the division. The Operations Department is responsible for transportation, salt waste management, and building maintenance, and has 23 staff augmented by two temporary staff during the busy summer months. The Environmental Services Department, with nine full-time staff and one part-time staff member, is responsible for potable water, wastewater management, and stormwater management services. And the Engineering Department, with five full-time staff, provides project management services for capital projects, development review, and data and asset management collection services. The Operations and Environmental Services Departments are located in the Municipal Operations Building. We visited that location on our bus tour a couple of weeks ago. And the Engineering Department works out of here in the Municipal Government Building. The first of the three main job functions for operations is transportation, which involves maintenance of most of the municipally-owned assets within the road right-of-way, including pavement, signs, curbs, gutters, traffic signals, sidewalks, and those types of infrastructure. Maintenance of these assets is performed proactively and within the confines of the operating budget. And includes various programs designed to maintain a safe corridor for motorists and pedestrians and to protect and maximize the life cycle of the assets. Some examples include potholes repaired, spray patching, hot-poor cracked ceiling. And you heard in the CO report last week that we accomplished 25,000 linear meters of cracked ceiling on pavement surfaces this summer. And milling and overlay, which is a common annual rehabilitation program, where we grind the pavement surface, repair the concrete infrastructure, and repave the road surface. The millings material is recycled and reused elsewhere because of its relatively dense properties and low dust emissions, such as the new recycle facility at Pogada Park, which is based on millings. Roadway marking, which is the installation of center and skip lines, crosswalks, and other painted and durable markings, is controlled by Council with the roadway marking policy. Street sweeping also controlled by Council in the street sweeping policy. These street sweepings, by the way, are hauled to the mob where they're screened and added to the traction control salt-sand mixture for use to fall in winter. About 35% of our 3,500 tons of our traction control is recycled street sweepings. And snow and ice control, also a Council-approved policy. Our 120 kilometers of roads are divided into four types of road designations, with each class receiving a different level of service. Snow and ice control maintenance begins when we've reached a certain trigger, which is simply a certain amount of snow accumulation that initiates operations, and includes a specified target, which is the timeline for initiation and completion of a particular class of roadway. Generally, the busier the road, the lower the trigger, the lower the target, the higher the maintenance it receives. The policy is intended to find a compromise between cost, safety, and the nuisance of snow on our roads. And lastly on this slide is the Road Safety Initiative, which was directed by Council in 2018 and managed by Public Works as a program to increase safety for motorists and pedestrians. Since 2018, there have been several improvements made for roadway safety, including various education tools. And you see them around town at the entrances, displaying the default speed limit of 40, the Share the Road signage, and those are some of the examples. And those are intended to... There's two types of speeders. Those that know they're speeding and those that don't know they're speeding. And those education tools are geared towards those that don't know they're speeding. If you're from Red Deer, you automatically assume the default speed limit might be 50 everywhere you go. And you're surprised to hear that in Sylvan and Acre and other towns, it's actually 40. And if we don't let them know that as they enter, and as you know, we have a lot of tourists and out-of-town visitors, it's important that we educate those so that at least the ones that are aware of the speed limit can make the conscious decision to follow the speed limit. We added two radar speed signs in 2019. These are the devices that flash your speed as you approach them. And we move them quite often, at least every couple of weeks, to keep them fresh and prominent. And they serve three functions. They calm traffic, they remind motorists of the speed limit, and, most importantly for us, they collect data. In 2023, Council approved a traffic calming policy, which provides guidance to Public Works on tracking traffic speed and volume, provides direction for follow-up actions, and provides a meaningful response to customers' requests for speeding control. Quite literally, before 2023, if we got a complaint of speeding vehicles from a resident, we would say, oh, call Municipal Enforcement. They'd love to hear from you. And since that policy was passed, we actually have a meaningful response where we can do a traffic survey. And we can place those radar speed signs or the tube counters or other devices using technology. We can actually do a traffic survey where we can further verify the extent of the problem or not. And lastly, RRFB devices, which are rectangular rapid-flash beacon devices, which are those solar-powered pedestrian lights that you see around town. We have managed to install 27 sets since 2018. And we have four sets planned in 2026, which is pending Council approval of the operating budget, of course. And these devices are installed at locations based on criteria. They're not random. They're not based on customer complaints. They're actually based on solid engineering data that includes the speed limit of the road, the traffic and pedestrian volumes, the characteristics of the pedestrians, children, elderly, the number of traffic lanes, and connectivity to schools or shopping or public amenities such as parks. RFB devices, when used with curb extensions, have a yield rate of over 80%. And a curb extension is shown in the middle picture on that slide, which is the concrete base that the device is set on. And it actually improves safety by increasing pedestrian visibility, shortens the distance to cross the road. Therefore, the pedestrian spends less time on the traffic lanes and on the road, and creates a tunneling effect for the motorists. And there's more. But these are many of the road safety initiatives that Council brought forward in 2018. And Public Works has followed through on many of these. And before I go to the second main function of salt waste, I'll just pause right here because I know I'm speaking fast. Is there any questions on that first segment?
No, Mr. Watson, you're good.
Thank you. The second main job function for operations is salt waste management. Funding is from a utility levy and not through taxation, which are set by Council in the Waste Bylaw. Public Works has four salt waste collection vehicles that operate on four collection days per week in specific areas. Along with the four vehicles, we own about 14,000 carts, about 7,000 of which are blue recycle carts, and about 7,000 of which are black garbage carts. We collect the contents of about 430,000 carts per year. There are three primary current services offered by Public Works. Weekly black cart collection, which transitioned from manual to automated collection in 2014. And all automated collection is, and you can see the photo in the slide, it's the arm in the truck that tips the cart, as opposed to the operator jumping out and throwing the debris into the garbage truck, the old system, pre-2014. This is a user-pay system where residents with a 240-liter cart pay a basic rate. And those residents that require additional capacity can choose to pay a higher rate and upsize to a 360-liter cart. The collected garbage is hauled to the City of Red Deer's landfill. The second primary service, curbside recycling, began in 2005 with weekly green box collection and transitioned to bi-weekly collection in 2018 when blue carts were introduced, which have up to six times the capacity as the old green boxes. This is also user-pay system. And like the black carts, residents may upsize their 240 to a 360-liter cart for an increased rate. The collected recyclables are hauled to the Materials Recovery Facility in Red Deer. And no tipage rate is charged to the town as is covered by the Extended Producer Responsibility Program. Commercial, institutional, or industrial properties do not receive recycling services from the town but are rather expected to provide their own services or use the recycling depots, which are partially funded by a levy that these properties pay. And the third curbside service, weekly organic waste collection, is a contracted program that runs annually for 24 weeks, from early May to mid-October. Residents provide their own container or degradable bags and place them for collection near the carts. The contractor hauls the collected organics to a processing facility located near Penhold. The residential garbage levy funds this program. Other waste services include large item pickup, toxic waste roundup, drop-and-swap recycling, kick-it-to-the-curb, pitch-in week, and other salt waste initiatives that are intended to reduce landfilling and promote waste diversion. Public Works operates a waste transfer site located on the east end of town. It has summer and winter hours and accepts various recyclable and non-recyclable products, such as e-waste, hazardous products such as paint and propane cylinders, organic waste, tires, and of course, garbage. The facility has two tipage rates, a lower one for residents because the operation of the facility is subsidized by the garbage levy. So our residents receive a lower rate, and non-residents pay a higher rate. Public Works also operates two recycling depots, one located at the waste transfer site, with restricted hours. That facility is only open during the hours of the waste transfer site, and one at Pogada Park that is open 24/7. And as you heard last Monday, the town is active in the Extended Producer Responsibility Program, which we can opt out of by providing 18-months notice, not 12, as I said in that meeting, or by allowing the agreement to expire in 2029. And as you know, the EPR program provides compensation to the town for providing curbside recycling and for the operation of the two recycling depots. And lastly, the Draft Salt Waste Master Plan addresses all aspects of the town's salt waste management system. And among other things, will make recommendations to Council regarding service levels for managing salt waste products. This long-term strategic planning document will be presented to Council in draft format early in 2026. Is there any questions before I go to the third and final slide on this?
I don't have a question. I have a question. How's the replacement of the facility for the drop-and-swop coming along? It's one of the things that people ask me about the most right now.
Thank you. Thank you for the question. And yeah, that's an incredibly popular facility. And when you see the master plan, you'll see that 85% of the residents actually visit that facility. So after last Monday's Council meeting, we immediately contacted the contractor, accepted the quotation. Those structures are ordered. They'll be here within four weeks, installed, and open for business. And I would say no later than December 15 through December 20.
Any other questions? No, continue, sir.
Thank you. And the third main job function for Public Works for operations is building maintenance. Staff are responsible for maintaining 54 municipal buildings from small structures like water pump houses or wastewater lift stations to the large, such as the next-door center. We, along with our contractors, provide maintenance and repair services to all aspects of the building envelope, including elevators, HVAC systems, plumbing, doors, windows, carpet, electrical components, and the like. We assist other departments with the planning, procuring, and project management for many projects from small to large. And there are some examples included in that slide. And lastly, building maintenance maintains a reserve fund for emergency repairs that occasionally do occur, like a leak in roof or a boiler failure. Is there any questions before we move to environmental services?
No, excellent. Thank you, Mr. Watson.
Thank you.
Hello, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you. Environmental Services handles the core utilities that keep the town functioning every day. We do this as a self-funded utility. We're responsible for drinking water, wastewater, stormwater, and environmental protection. So here's what that actually means. We produce drinking water that comes from the seven groundwater wells there. It goes into one of two treatment reservoirs and then into the distribution system. We monitor water quality consistently, and we meet provincial and federal standards every single time. We also collect wastewater, which is produced by each and every home, business, and facility in the town of Sylvan Lake. These send their wastewater directly to us. We control and maintain an entire network of pipes, manholes, lift stations, so we can safely send all of the wastewater to the regional line and, in essence, into Red Deer. We have 13 sanitary lift stations that help us move the sewage towards Red Deer. We also manage the stormwater system. And that's everything that deals with snowmelt, groundwater, surface water, including ponds, creeks, ditches, culverts, and 60 kilometers of storm pipe. Our job is to reduce flooding risk and protect our local water bodies and our ecosystems. We also practice environmental stewardship. We respond to environmental issues surrounding water, soil, and air. And this includes spills, invasive species, water quality concerns, and regulatory compliance. This is the team that is behind all of that environmental services work. So we're a small, specialized group with five operators, one manager, one supervisor, one lead operator, one administrative assistant, and one compliance officer. That's it, but every person plays a very critical role. We cover 24/7 operations, emergency response, regulatory reporting, sampling, maintenance, public concerns, and we assist with capital projects. For the size of our system and the expectations from the town, the province, and the federal government, this is a lean crew, but we're effective because everyone in our team has been cross-trained. It's multi-disciplined, and they're experienced. And they're also very invested in the town of Sylvan Lake. From there, I'm going to jump into some of our major operational and capital project highlights that we're focused in on right now. So as you heard on our tour, there is a project for decommissioning the South Reservoir's old pump system. The pumps, the pipes, and the electrical system are at the end of their life. And attending to them now reduces the risks and keeps our water supply reliable. And in addition to that, we're also making some water treatment upgrades, which will help further our compliance and ensure that our drinking water is safe for consumption at all times. You also heard about the Northeast Gateway Main Transmission Line. And this is about improving the flow and building redundancy so that we're not relying on just one route to feed the North System. This project will improve the fire flow, further our water securities, and help our growth and development. In addition to that, we're also embarking on a new wells project where we need more groundwater supply in both the North and the South Systems. We are doing this to meet our future population growth and as we trend towards 30,000 people. These projects, again, are about long-term water securities. As you heard earlier, we are also embarking on lagoon reclamation. We're actively seeking to reclaim the old lagoon system now that the town is fully on a regional wastewater system. This project is forecasted to save money, return the land to usable land for the town, and remove long-term liabilities as well. On our tour, you also heard briefly about our source control program when we had the opportunity to meet with our regional member. The goal of this program is to reduce high-strength discharge to protect our infrastructure as well as the regional and the city of Red Deer's. This helps control the costs and avoids over-strength surcharges from the city of Red Deer. So Environmental Services' overall theme for 2026 is proactive investment that protects the town while we build a resilient system now instead of scrambling later. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to Eric, unless you have some questions.
Counselor Stindi.
Thanks for the tour the other day. And my question is related to the testing. And I saw the lab to do the wastewater and potable water, freshwater. And my question is about stormwater. Do we have to test our stormwater? Do we do that internally if we are required to? Or does Alberta Environment or federal forces pop in on some kind of schedule to see how we as a community, the condition of our stormwater that leaves our community?
Fantastic. Through the chair, that's a great question. So the laboratory that you did see there, right now, we are strictly testing for our treated potable water. Stormwater samples and wastewater samples now, we rely on an IAS, so, in essence, accredited laboratory for those results. Now, some of the stormwater sampling that we're doing, some lessons that we learned through our invasive species fight at the Lakeway Landing Storm Pond last year, is we've embarked on what's called eDNA testing, where each one of our stormwater systems, our stormwater ponds, is tested for trace goldfish DNA as an early indicator. Again, what we learned from the Lakeway Landing Storm Pond is to find these fish before they're visible. And that's all in an effort to protect the lake. So any stormwater sampling, wastewater sampling, or potable water sampling, our results are submitted through Alberta Environment. And I hope that covered your question.
Yeah, so that does. And as a follow-up comment, just to share, a number of counselors in the past have spoken with some residents connected to Marina Bay. And I know that group of residents does some water testing. And it includes stormwater from our town. So I encourage them to share it with administration just because it's very interesting data. And hopefully, it's shared with Council at one point from those residents as well. But I did encourage them to reach out, and they may.
Absolutely. They've got a very active group there, and they are doing the best they can with the resources that they have available. Often, programs like that are fielded from a watershed management society or watershed management group, which the town of Sylvan Lake, at this time, doesn't have. But we're really happy to see that they've taken their ownership in it and are actively doing their part.
Ms. Phillips.
Just as an update, they're presenting on Tuesday.
Okay, Mr. Boudreau.
Thank you, yes. So, there we go. My branch is the Engineering Department with the Public Works. So the first branch that we manage is our capital projects that we do. That would be for any transportation projects, stormwater, wastewater, water facilities, any of those major scope projects that you see happening throughout town. We are the ones sort of invested, engaging, and managing those projects. So when it comes to those projects, the five Ws, the why, the what, the when, the where, and the who, are the principal things that we try to come up with and reason. We don't pick these things willy-nilly. We don't see something and say, okay, let's try this one and see how it works. We're habit of asking questions that are very thorough, investigating things that others may not want to have a look at. We kick over stones. We try to find the root cause of problems. We ask and we investigate thoroughly into everything it is that we look and contemplate doing before we overcommit on what we're going to be doing so that we can find out exactly what the root problems are and come up with risk assessments, come up with solutions to those risks. And if we can, how to best mitigate those by whatever means possible. So how do we track? How do we manage? How do we get all that data that I just mentioned? We have our master plans. So a 2019 stormwater, a 2020 water, a 2020 wastewater, and a 2022 transportation master plan that we've just completed here. These are very thorough documents that go through the entirety of each utility through our entire system in great detail. They provide information on not only the existing state of the utility, but they go through five, 10, 15, up to 30-plus years, how to best manage that utility depending on a variety of scenarios. If the town in this area grows, what do I need to be ready for? If we see events happening in downtown, what do we need to do down there to address them or be ready for them? We also use it for capital projects. Again, when it comes to a utility, if there's some that are older or seem to be failing more than usual, we use these documents as well to sort of guide us as to maybe where's a better location to do a project versus another. And so another aspect that does play into it is, you know, our federal and provincial municipal standards, though. We have to make sure we're adhering to their guidelines, to their provincial partners. You know, environmentalists and them, you know, because we're close to a lake, of course, because we have two river bodies and multiple, you know, lakes and stuff nearby, that we have to make sure we're being very conscious as to everything we do to ensure that those impacts that we're having on those, because we will, are minimized, if not improved upon through whatever it is we're doing. We have two provincial highways, actually, three, that run through our community. Highway 11, Highway 11A, and Highway 20. So again, another provincial partner that we work with continually to ensure what we do do aligns with not only their goals but also their standards. And both of us are able to complete things in a timely and efficient manner. CN Rail is another stakeholder that we work with. And they have federal regulations that we need to adhere to. So, you know, there's multiple parties, multiple stakeholders, and multiple standards that we're always continuing to sort of address and make sure that we are considering when it is we're looking at doing any of our capital projects. Another big factor in our capital project decision-making, though, is yourselves, Council. You know, what is your vision? You know, what is your vision? What is your strategic priorities? You know, those things are, again, are principal guidings for us to say, okay, this is something that needs to be addressed for our community at large. So how can we make it happen? You know, how does this look? And we work on those to make sure that, again, we're doing the things best right for, for our community. Through this entire process, we are always engaging with all town departments. There is no project we do that is only impacting Public Works. Everything we do will impact at least three different departments to some degree. So we continually try to communicate, talk with them, and coordinate with whatever it is they have coming on or something in the future that they want to bring on to ensure whenever either of us are doing something, we're ready for it and we can future-proof whatever it is we're doing to minimize any impacts down the road. Some stakeholders, too. I brought up provincial and federal stakeholders, but there's also Accogas in Fortis, Alberta, and developers in our community. They have their own projects, they have their own things going on and their own needs and their own specifications. So we work in partnership with them as well continually, ensuring what we do, either A, will work for their future plans, or will be able to address any issues or conflicts with their utilities that we have in our zone. And then the public. The public are one of the biggest inputs we have when we're doing our projects. We talk to them early and often. We found that is a very good means for us to not only ensure what we're doing is going to, to meet their wants and needs, but also so they know what's going on. They know what's coming up in a timely manner, so that we can hopefully address any things before it happens. Or if something does happen, they know who to contact promptly, and then we can start investigating and addressing whatever concerns they may have as promptly as well as we can. So we take all this information, all this input, all this research, all this data, and we have to decide, what do we do? Well, we look at the degree of benefit, the impact will this project have on the community at large? What of our existing, what are our future needs? Is this project dependent so that another project can go on? Does parks need this done, this utility installed, so that they can do something down the road? It's something that, again, plays a big part in our decision-making to ensuring, again, we have the needs today to do what we have to do tomorrow. Maintenance and operational needs, you know, coordinating with our other Public Works departments, but also all departments in town. We can build anything in the world, but can we maintain it? That is the question. So ensuring that we talk to the people who actually do the maintenance work, who are going to be there long-term to deal with whatever it is we create, is vital to ensure, again, that what we do is done in the most economical manner possible for longevity of our community. And then funding, grants. You know, while I say, yes, we can build anything, we're a creative bunch, us engineers, but everything comes with a price tag. So we see what we have to do. Maybe they're large scopes. We can, can we break it up in a number of years? Three years, five years, ten years even in some of the cases, depending on what our project is entailed and what our town's needs are. And grants play a big part of that. So gathering all this data, doing all this preliminary work upfront, as we talked about, allows us to be ready to apply for grants early and have that money and have that funding, hopefully, if we do our job properly, in place, early enough, so that when it comes time to do everything, it's less of a burden on our community. I'll leave it at that. Does anybody have any questions they want to bring up regards to our capital projects?
Doesn't that, oh, Ms. Counselor, Counselor Billado?
The reports that you have listed, is that accessible for anybody to read? You know, a little light reading, just to get extra information?
Through the chair to Counselor Billado, yes. Everything is online. Everything's fully accessible to anybody who wants to read them. We can certainly get those links. They're all in our library database we have on our town website, for sure.
Counselor Winnicky?
While I expect those reports are probably going to come up in the near term for review, does administration believe that any of them require substantial modification, given, you know, some of them are six years old now at this point?
Through the chair to Counselor Winnicky, yes, that is a very good point and a good observation. We, while we create these, they don't sit on a shelf. Like I said, we're constantly looking at them, addressing them, modifying them, and doing the things in them that is being required. And so when you start doing that, as you alluded, some of them are coming up five, six years old. We need to go back and revisit them. So you'll see when we start getting into our operating projects that we'll be bringing forth. One of them is our water master plan. We want to revisit it. We know we've done a great deal already with our reservoirs, with our systems, with our well systems, and how our system operates at large. It's no longer relevant to what we have. So we go back, and we visit it, and bring it up to date to today's standards and today's technologies. There's always new things being done, new processes being figured out. So we look at it at large and make sure what we have is still relevant to this day and age.
Keep going.
Okay, thank you. So next up, the next branch of the Engineering Department's responsibility is development review. Development can look a lot of different ways. There's quarter sections, so those are large sections of land, of course, I'm sure you're familiar with. The Greyhawk, the Sixty West, Bogatal Park, Cressview, Beacon Hill, Vista, Iron Gate, just to name a few of the some more active ones we have in town. There are a few more than those shown, but all of them require a great deal of reviews, coordination, discussions, reporting, drawings, analysis, studies, to do whatever it is they need to do. They start off with creating outline plans, which give an overall concept of what needs to be done. Servicing studies, which go over details on how the overall systems, water, sanitary, and stormwater, and transportation will look within their quarter section development. Also, traffic impact assessments, TIA's, on how the growth will impact the town at large, intersections, roadways. And helps us determine and assess capital projects yet again, as to do we need to do intersection improvement here, do we need roadway widening over here? All of those things, these guys play a major factor into it, and having that information done to the degree we need it is very, very important to ensure, again, what we do at large is being done for our future needs. But also, there's smaller developments, infill parcels. So somebody has a single parcel land down at the Cabin District, and they want to put a house, boom. They have to do, not to the extent of the large quarter sections, but they submit drawings, grading plans, and on some cases, depending on the degree, you know, some other utility problems and studies to allow that development to go forward. Another one is commercials, same thing, but to a larger degree. They usually have large parking lots and bigger facility needs. So, you know, again, their impact to the utility requires a bit more detail, a bit more coordination, a bit more information to make sure we understand their impacts, we're addressing what they need appropriately, and so that, you know, down the road, we know what we have. And then industrial lands, same thing as commercial, though. You know, bigger sites, massive, massive buildings on some occasions. If you look down the industrial park, you know, what are their needs? Each one of these have very, very specific requirements, needs, that we need to treat each with their own kind of magnifying glass. Every residential, commercial, industrial lot have a unique, while same kind of requirements, each one is unique to itself because no two buildings are the same. And then again, like with everything else, our stakeholders. They themselves have projects that we need to review. They want to put in more utilities. Okay, that's great, but we need to make sure what they're proposing, again, aligns with our future growth plans, our capital projects. Other developments are taking place with our neighboring, you know, partners. So they submit to us drawings, reports, and studies that we, again, have to review, have to go over, have to coordinate, have to meet with, to ensure whatever it is that our provincial, our neighboring communities, and these other stakeholders, whatever they want to do, still will adhere to and align with whatever it is that us, the town of Sylvan Lake, is wanting and needing as well. And then while all this is going on, we just don't walk away and say, okay, we trust you. You got this. No, we always do inspections. We go in the field. And so the first level inspection is what we call a CCC certified construction certificate. This happens once the utility's installed, and we go in there and we take a look to make sure, yep, before it goes online, before it's serviced to the community at large, yes, this does meet the specifications needed, it is safe for public use. After that time, there's a warranty period where if anything goes wrong, it is on that developer's responsibility to maintain and address any issues that arise. And after that period, what we have is an FAC, a final acceptance certificate, which we do a final inspection on that to ensure, again, that that utility has been operating as we see fit, that no issues has arisen through the course of its use. And if something has, again, before we pass that FAC, they are to address and fix all of those issues, and it's all done at their cost. This is one hundred percent their responsibility, as it is something that they themselves say they want to do and need to do. And then there's cleanup inspections. So I should make it clear, those FACs and CCCs are usually typically done just for the larger quarter section ones, bigger, larger developments. Cleanup inspections, though, are for more the infill parcels, the residential, the commercial, and the industrial. We look at similar things, just, again, smaller degree. But we want to make sure, again, no matter who it is or what they're doing, it has an impact to the environment, to our town, and to our operations. So we need to make sure that, A, what they've done is done the way it needs to be done, so that everything down the road won't cause too many adverse impacts. So basically, oh, go ahead.
Counselor Stindi?
Question about the time that the, you know, developer finishes utility, say, in a neighborhood, and they turn it on after they get their CCC. How long is that guarantee period where they have to, you know, fix anything, an issue that pops up later, you know, shows leaking or whatever like it? Yeah, how long is that period?
Through the chair to Counselor Stindi, good question. It depends sometimes on the nature of the utility. Standard is two years from the time of the approval of the CCC. That's for transportation, water, sanitary, and stormwater. Landscaping, it's typically one year, but again, it all depends on the degree of what they're doing. Sometimes it's pushed to two years, sometimes our underground utilities are pushed to three years. Again, it's always dependent on what it is we're doing. So, but that is the standard, is two-year, one year for landscaping, yeah. Okay, thank you. So as you see, this is a great deal of information that comes our way. I'm sure you've noticed, our town is a very active community. It has not stopped growing in a number of years. We are probably one of the business communities in the province. I continually talk to peers in the industry, in other municipalities, consultants and contractors. And two-on-one, they say, you guys are busy, busier than anywhere else we've ever seen or been. And they've said this straight through the entirety of COVID, before and after. So there is a consistent growth rate here that is high, that requires a lot of, a lot of review, a lot of coordination, and a lot of communication. So it takes a lot of effort to go through all these. But our team have been up to the challenge time and time again. And we always make sure that whatever it is that we do when it comes to development community, it is done with the thoughts of how does it impact the community at large? How does it impact the environment? And how does it impact our town? And ensuring that we are looking out for all of that at the end of the day to make sure that, again, it is done the way it needs to be for our future. The next branch of our department's responsibility is data and asset management. So we talked a lot about information, documentation, you know, utilities. There is so much that we have to manage, we have to take care of, we have to know about, you know, where it is, what time was it done, what's its state, how's it operating? All of this stuff is data and asset management. So all of these documents, all this information, we take it in, but we have to store it into a means that can be easily accessible and something that will allow us to say, okay, something has to be addressed. How can it be, how can it be communicated to me so that it can remind me in a timely manner? Because no, no person can remember this, just writing on a sheet of paper even. So we have to create an automated system to sort of inform us of timelines, scheduling, to ensure these things are still being adhered to and administered and dressed in the proper order. So we have a software, our Lucidity software it's called, that takes all this data, organizes it down, and helps us make sure that everything is in that one place where it's easily discoverable, tracks it for us, and monitors everything to ensure that we know what's wrong, how can we fix it, what have we done in the past? So it's a bit of our, uh, what's we're looking for here, just our, just our database, you know, just, just for everything that we have in Public Works. So there are other means that we have in that software. So one tool we have is our GIS mapping. This software and this program is second to none. I've talked to you already about other communities, other people have talked to about our town and how quickly busy we are. They've also mentioned our GIS mapping tool. It is, again, an envy to many. The ability to show what we show readily and to, to anybody at any time is, is an excellent tool. A lot of engineers come to me and they say they wish others would have something near as, as good as what we have for communicating to them what we have and how well we do it. So, yeah, our IT departments have done a great job in working with us to ensure that, that we have something that, that is as well done as it is. You know, a big part of that is, you know, we're doing field surveys, we're doing traffic and pedestrian counts. Again, these are all tools we use to gather that data, to track, to see what's needed, where to see how things are operating. You know, we can track vehicle counts, we can track pedestrian counts at any given time or place. It really does do a great deal for us to ensure, again, we know the state, we can determine future growth rates and see, okay, let's try to anticipate as best we can so that we can hopefully alleviate some problems down the road. And then our record drawings. So everything we have, we've already talked about, there's records, there's drawings, there's reports, there's studies. All of that we digitize, all of that we keep in a central database, again, for anyone to access at any time, from anywhere, be it a mobile phone, be it your laptop, it's all there readily available. So that if something goes down at two o'clock in the morning, you, you got the information right there and it's handy. We do know in the past, record management was a challenge. They didn't benefit from the advantages of technology we have today. We've gone through great pains to go through old records from over seventy years, and we've digitized most everything. We're still in the process of doing it. But it is, it is one of our endeavors to ensure that all this data we have had over many, many decades has been catalogued, addressed, assessed, and documented within our asset and data management software and programming. Is there any questions on that one? It is probably the least flashy thing we do. I, I do know my staff just love going down to the lower level and scanning hours of documents. It is, yeah.